Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I ask those that if you'd like to speak during the public comment period of the meeting, we've got a sign-in sheet in the back corner of the room and we look for you to take a moment to complete that for us ahead of time. Number two on the agenda is the adoption of the business meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Number three is the consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number four, matters of council members. Anyone have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I just had one thing. I was going to ask Mike or Jim what the status on our new vehicle ordinance is for, you know, abandoned or left out vehicle or left vehicle.
So yes, sir, recognizing that this is a priority for the council and our community may be helpful to have a little bit of background to, for, for the council and the listening public that the Code of Virginia provides that any locality may by ordinance provide that it's unlawful to keep except in fully enclosed building or structure or otherwise shielded or screened from view on any property zone for residential, commercial, or agricultural property, an inoperable vehicle. And so that's the issue that is a primary interest and concern today and been a priority for the council. An inoperable vehicle includes any motor vehicle, trailer, or semi-trailer which one is not in operating condition, two, or is which for a period of 60 days or longer has been partially or totally disassembled, three, or on which are displayed neither valid license plate nor valid inspection sticker. And inoperable or inoperative vehicles pose a substantial threat to health and safety in our community and are blighting influence on the city's neighborhoods and constitute a nuisance in that regard. You may recall that in 2018 and 2019, the city council, in accordance with the Code of Virginia, amended the city code in order to better address the keeping of inoperable vehicles on private property and on public right-of-ways. City staff has worked through some practical logistical and legal matters in order to increase enforcement measures intended to eliminate, excuse me, eliminate unlawful storage of inoperative vehicles in our community. We have surveyed neighborhoods to identify offenders and are prepared to begin sending out notices of violation to those identified offenders. It is our earnest hope that the property owners will come into voluntary compliance through either the notice or just general awareness through coverage or information. Further, it is our intention to provide identified resources available to remove and in many cases remunerate owners for their vehicles. This allows, the law allows 10 business days from the official date of notice to remove a vehicle or to otherwise bring the vehicle into compliance. The city may initiate removal after that time. Additionally, violators are subject to a civil penalty in the amount of $200 for the initial violation and $500 for each day of violation thereafter, up to a maximum penalty of $5,000. It is our intention to seek civil penalties as warranted. So that is the status of our program and appreciate councils' patience and also appreciate councils pressing this as a priority for you as a body and thereby for our staff and its value to the community as we strengthen our program and move into action.
Thank you all for your work.
Well, Mike, just as a follow-up to that, could you elaborate as to when folks or members of council and complaints that we get might start realizing those notices of violations? Obviously, we've, there are several dozen, if not hundreds, of vehicles that are, what might, might qualify under the program.
Right. So I don't think we're in the hundreds of vehicles. I think we are, the inventory that I last saw was approaching 100 and, which I would not profess to say that that has identified every inoperable vehicle in the community, but I don't think that we've missed it by a factor of 100% either. I think that, I might ask Mr. Shaw when we would anticipate the notices being issued in this initial round of enforcement.
They're being prepared as we speak. I would think by next week, this is obviously a short week, that notices would go out. I wouldn't expect that you would see any vehicles towed immediately, but I think the notices will be on the streets next week.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hamphard, and there are also background work that we're doing as far as trying to set up a place to have the vehicles towed to, to have somebody to tow them, to have a place for it to be stored. Aren't these a lot of hurdles that's not really something that we're dragging our feet on, but just trying to get it into the program?
Yes, sir. I would, I would say, one, given that the volume of known offending vehicles, that the provisions of the law are, provide definition to what you're allowed, what a locality has the authority to do and what authority it can and cannot delegate. And further, as a practical matter, we don't have space, nor do we anticipate that private vendors have space to do a full-on, you know, we're going to collect all these vehicles that are known to be out of compliance. I think it's important for the success of the program and as a practical matter that if we decided that we wanted, or for whatever reason we're compelled to do that, we would have some practical impediments as well. Additionally, there was some hope as we worked through this over the recent months that it would be that an economic incentive, a profit incentive would emerge that would facilitate speed and effectiveness, but in the current environment, we don't, and in the, in compliance with the law, we don't think that that will emerge. So I don't think it will be the case that a private sector partner, a towing company with whom we might contract or partner, will find this to be a completely lucrative endeavor. Fairly stated, Mr. Shaw. Do you need to clean some of that up?
No, I think that's the case. For many tow companies, at least the vendors that we work with, the prospect of simply dealing with inoperative vehicles is not that lucrative. Often cases that if, especially if they're looking, if the owner has no interest in the vehicle, then, you know, the salvage market for vehicles is somewhat limited. There's a requirement of law that once the vehicle is, has been removed, that it's held for 21 days before it can be disposed of, and then there is a process of gaining title to the vehicle, but again, that's not necessarily an easy thing to accomplish. So I think we'll, we'll have to provide some incentive to tow companies to work with us. And then the companies that we know have limited storage space, that they do other types of towing for vehicles that have been in accidents and, you know, those types of things as well, so we're somewhat limited, the tow company will be somewhat limited in that regard.
I do think that heretofore, much of the improvement that has occurred, limited albeit, has been achieved through voluntary compliance and communication and, but I wouldn't understate that simply the next step of issuing notices and applying civil penalties would, while not, may or may not have the desired aesthetic impact or improvement to blighting, it does reflect a serious step on the part of the organization and moves us closer to, I think, achieving the objectives of the, of the council.
I'd like to add that it seems like, well, if it's my imagination or not, but it seems like the police department is doing more for the vehicles actually sitting on the roadway. I've noticed a lot of them have been removed. Some of them have only been moved into the yards, but we're starting to have that end of enforcement, I think, picked up also, so I'd like to thank the department for that.
Thank you, sir. That's correct.
Great, thank you. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to share?
Just as a reminder, again, first Tuesday of every month, I meet with whoever's interested at the French Press at nine o'clock in the morning, just as an open meeting, so I will be there. That will be December the 3rd will be the first Tuesday in December, and I'll be there for an hour or so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I've got just a couple of things. We joined our new downtown business, Shenandoah Hemp Supply, just right over here on the corner, for their grand opening, and it's well-attended. Family and friends from outside of the state came to celebrate with them, and so we welcomed them to downtown Waynesboro. Attended a follow-up meeting on Afton Express, which is a concept of a, of a regional partnership for transit from Stanton, making stops, Waynesboro, over to UVA and Charlottesville, so more to come on that, but it was, they're making progress through the PDC and the Bright System, and they're taking the lead on that effort. Wanted to share, as I understand it, that crews are mobilized at the Florence Avenue Bridge and, and work is underway. And then lastly, just as a reminder for folks, that the Christmas parade is on the, on the 7th, and I understand we have a visitor from the North Pole that will be making, making rounds, so. Awesome. All right. Number five is to hold a public hearing to receive comment and consider introducing an ordinance regarding a conditional use permit, request by Ms. Yvette Pintor, owner approving a conditional use permit to install a manufactured home at 1015 Gardner Street, tax map number 28-2-6-3. Mr. Judee.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The request today is for a conditional use permit for a manufactured home at 1015 Gardner Street. As you mentioned, Gardner Street is in the northeast portion of the city. This is almost the last lot before you leave the city heading out, Gravel Ridge Road up into the county, near the old, old landfill. So to get to it, you would head up Shenandoah Avenue and the Forest Gardner, just for, so you know where it is. Here's a map of the, the area. This is the subject property right here. Again, this is where Gravel Ridge Roads heads, heads out into the county. Gardner Street is right, and Frye Street and Forest Avenue is an area just north of Shenandoah Avenue that has, was platted probably in 50s or 60s and has a number, a mix of housing in that area. This is the property. The applicant has purchased this property and is the owner of it. This is a house that is in, was in very poor condition. It was assessed at $2,500 under the city assessor, but it was occupied until recently. As part of this application, she is going to tear it down. In fact, went up there today and took this picture, and they are currently demolishing the structure. So the request is that the applicant wants to move her single-wide manufactured home, which is currently located in Crimora, onto the property. It's a fairly new home. It's a 2017 model that she has maintained in good condition, and the lot dimensions are 100 feet by 100 feet, so it's plenty of space according to our ordinance. She needs 5,000 square feet, and she has about 10,000. This will have to meet site development standards, which will be enforced by the building official. It has to be on a full foundation, completely skirted, has to be set up and tied down, and any kind of towing apparatus and lights removed. There is no particular requirement in the ordinance for, for instance, landscaping. That's something that you can add with a conditional use permit if you feel it's necessary. It is a wooded lot currently and is surrounded by woods. Sorry, it's not a great quality photo, but you can see that this is the unit that she intends to move to the site. As I mentioned, it's a new unit, a fairly, a two-year-old unit, and this is where it would be located on the site. Staff recommended and the planning commission voted in favor of a condition requiring that the, the mobile home be located parallel, be placed parallel to the street. This is a condition that we've placed on all of our other conditional use permits for manufactured homes. You don't have to enforce it, but for consistency's sake, we continue to recommend it. It just creates the appearance of sort of blending in, blends in better with the single-family homes that the front door faces the street and has a wider facade as opposed to having it lengthwise, and you can see that. I've showed pictures before of comparing the two. Planning Commission recommended approval on a six-o vote. Obviously, manufactured homes are not ideal residential use, but we felt that it was an improvement to the site, that the removal of the existing derelict structure and the introduction of an owner occupant to the street was a good thing for the neighborhood. We felt that this was at the edge of the city, that it's not on a current entrance corridor, and that the neighborhood around it has a number of existing manufactured homes. There are two located in the next block over and several out in the county right adjacent. So we didn't feel that it would affect property values since we would figure that a purchaser's expectation would not be the complete absence of manufactured homes in that area. We have received one call from, from a resident of the area who's concerned about property values from it, but other than that, all right, that's all that I have. Any questions for me?
Any questions of Mr. Judee?
It's a dead-end street, correct?
I'm sorry?
It's a dead-end street?
It's not a dead-end street. Well, there is a dead-end further down, but it's, yeah, so there, there's a dead-end here, but it really kind of turns into Gravel Ridge Road and keeps going into the county. Yeah.
How long have the other homes been there, the manufactured homes down the block?
This one is brand-new, actually.
Okay.
Though it was placed there under a previously existing permit. This one is very old and is in very poor condition, and there's one further down the block that is, I want to say, 10 or 20 years old. The planning commission did, as part of their motion, recommended that the conditional use permit be extended to a future manufactured home of greater value than this one, if the applicant wished to replace it. She expressed an interest in actually having, purchasing it double-wide as soon as she can. There's no guarantee of that, but the planning commission wanted to allow for that.
Any other questions? Great, thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, I will open the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, no one has signed up. It is our practice that the owner or the applicant be allowed to speak if they wish to add anything in addition to the, to Mr. Judee's presentation.
Bless you.
It's not, not required.
Okay. All right, thank you. With that, I will have...
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if they knew they were supposed to sign up, but did, was there someone that wanted to speak? Maybe not? Okay, never mind.
Yep.
I, no, my, he already said, the property is being deviled at this time right now, so I'm trying to get everything moved, you know, so I can get everything together.
Okay.
But it is being cleaned up at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, is there a motion to introduce any, any additional questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. So having been introduced, it's be considered at our, do I need a second on this one?
Yes.
Okay. So is there, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Good, thank you. So a motion properly seconded, we'll bring this to our December 9th meeting. All right, thank you very much. Number six was to consider adopting a resolution certifying new streets for Virginia Department Transportation Urban Maintenance Funds. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the resolution basically requests that these streets be admitted into the, the public street system so that we can be reimbursed from Virginia Department of Transportation for their maintenance. These are all newly constructed subdivision streets in different parts of the city, Evershaw and Claybrook, and some out at Pratt's Run in that area.
Thank you. Are there any questions concerning the resolution? I'll just note that I'll, I'll be abstaining as a, as an employee of the Virginia Department of Transportation. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention. Thank you. Number seven is to receive a report and recommendation from Crystal Morpheus, founder and CEO of Creative Economic Development Consulting LLC regarding East Main Street redevelopment and marketing strategy. Mr. Hitchen.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I would also like to thank several members of our Economic Development Authority in attendance tonight to hear our presentation. The East Main Street corridor, as you know, is an important and critical element to the city. We've recently seen some organic success in that area. However, we still have a long way to go with some underutilized buildings as well as greenfield area. Earlier this year, the Economic Development Office, as well as Planning and Parks and Recreation, we've recognized that this is a critical factor in some continued success in our city. We've made application to Creative Economic Development Consulting firm for their creative give-back program, of which our speaker will detail a little bit more later. And tonight, we've been working with them all spring and summer. Tonight is the final report, and we appreciate the opportunity for Crystal to give that to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome.
I'm glad to be with you. It's actually quite fitting to give this presentation on the beginning of Thanksgiving week. I'll talk more about our creative give-back. It is one of the ways we give back, and so this season of Thanksgiving is just very appropriate for me to give this presentation. I'm very glad to be here with you.
Thank you.
Just to talk a little bit about the creative give-back and why the Waynesboro project was selected, our firm started in 2014, this crazy idea of giving away one consulting project a year, up to $25,000 of our consulting time and expertise, to a project that just was exciting and fun to do and would make a big difference in a community. So we've been doing this for many years. We offer it to economic development groups in three states, Virginia and the two Carolinas. We're headquartered in North Carolina, and this is our second project in Virginia. The reason that the Waynesboro project was selected was because this redevelopment corridor could be a pivot point for your community. It could be a transformational economic development project. It also is similar to the struggles that many communities that I work in face. Many communities have a deteriorated corridor that could transform the community in many ways. So we make the, the information that we gain from each give-back project available to the public through our website so that other communities can benefit from the work that we've done here, and you can read reports from other communities in the past on our website, too. So the creativity, the innovation, the energy that Greg and his team put into the application was very important. We get dozens of applications, our staff narrows it to three, and then an independent panel picks the winner. And I will tell you that they pick a winner that has a lot of energy in the application, so you should give special thanks to your team for bringing this project to, to Waynesboro. The scope of work included touring and learning about the corridor. We met with business owners in the corridor and allies to learn about the business in the, in the area, but also about the community's plans and desires for development of the corridor. We did economic and retail leakage analysis, and I'll share some highlights with you. We also looked at the parcels and vacant buildings, especially the underutilized properties all the way from downtown through the corridor and at the intersection. We also did an economic impact analysis of what could happen if some new companies located in the corridor, and I'll share those, that result with you. We looked at best practices, and I'm going to share with you the redevelopment strategy and the marketing plan. So there is some retail information, leakage information in the report. I hope that you will take the opportunity to read all the details. Some things I'll highlight is the significant regional retail market, and when I say regional, we looked at the city of Waynesboro and Nelson and Augusta Counties, and we also even looked wider in some instances. There's a very large retail market, and especially in food and beverage, if you think about things that tourists would need coming to the area, traveling the Blue Ridge Parkway, things that hikers would need, things that people that are going to the national park, you'll see specialty foods, general merchandise, beer and wine, or brew pubs, restaurants, things associated with things that visitors and travelers would need. So there is an opportunity for additional business growth in the corridor to capture that retail leakage. There's also a significant tourism economy, as you know, almost 400 million in tourism expenditures in the region, a large entertainment and recreation market, so think outdoor goods and recreation goods. There's a high occupancy rate, so there's opportunity for travelers in the area, and about 20,000 cars a day at that 64 Blue Ridge Parkway, East Main Street intersection. So there's a lot of traffic coming through that area, and I've traveled through it many times. You get off that intersection, and there's nothing that really pulls you into Waynesboro, and that's what our project looked at. As I said, we did an economic impact analysis. We used the Econometric Modeling Tool, IMPLAN, to look at what would happen in the economy if three new businesses located in the corridor. We just selected a general merchandise store since, since there's retail leakage in that area, a restaurant, it could be like a farm-to-table or brew pub type of restaurant in that corridor, and also a outdoor recreation type of retailer. And when we modeled what could happen with those three types of businesses, those three businesses alone could generate about 130 jobs in the economy. That's both direct, indirect, and induced jobs from the economic output, and about $11 million in annual output. So taken as a group, just a few businesses located in the corridor could make a significant economic impact to the whole city of Waynesboro and the regional economy. So now I'm going to talk about the redevelopment plan and the marketing strategy, and I'd like for you to just think about these two images, because I'm going to talk a lot about visual statements and imagery, because really, when you're, when you travel places, you look for a unique experience. You look for something that defines that area to be different than other places. When you pull off a highway and you decide whether you're going to turn left or right or go straight, those visual cues are very important. It's also what you take pictures in front of, it's what you post on social media, so those images are really important. I've pulled those two for a couple of reasons. One, you're familiar with the chimney project, the Heritage Group that's putting chimneys throughout the area, so that's a visual marker for this region, and also arches, which Waynesboro used to have an arch, and the Blue Ridge Parkway is known for their beautiful rock arches. So I'll talk about those two images in particular. So the first goal of the redevelopment strategy is to make the 250, Highway 250, a tourism gateway, and you'll notice on the report cover, and I'll get to it a little later, we've dubbed it the Gateway Parkway just for our project, but to really make it a true gateway so that people want to come into Waynesboro. So the first strategy is a long-range strategy to develop a new visitor center. Right now, when you pull off that interstate intersection and you pull off the ramp, it's very hard to see the visitor center, and when you go to the visitor center, it's not really representative of Waynesboro and the beautiful downtown that you have and the businesses that you have here. If you've been, if you haven't been to the visitor center lately there, you should go. It's just not representative of this community. So when you pull off that highway, we want something that says, "Come into Waynesboro." The long-range strategy is to develop a new regional visitor center there, hopefully in partnership with Augusta and Nelson Counties. That is a long-range vision because of the challenges of property ownership and development at the intersection, but in the shorter term... But in the shorter term, relocate that visitor center to the East Main Street corridor so that you can have more parking, you can have picnic area, you can have one of those huge chimneys outside for people to pull over and take their picture at, you can have a small dog lot, you can even have RV parking, and just a nice place for people to pull in and learn more about Waynesboro and learn why they need to come into downtown and stay in your community. So the short term is to relocate the visitor center. Long range is a regional visitor center, maybe even with a museum component to it at that intersection. But as you relocate the visitor center to the corridor, what I'd really like to see when you pull off that highway is even a small pullout with a large sign. If you've been to national parks, you know at the beginning, entrance to the national park, there's just a car pullout and a large sign that says, "Welcome to Shenandoah National Park." It's a place for people to pull out, take a photo. There can be some signage there that directs people into Waynesboro. So think of it in really three stages: the relocation of the visitor center with a short pullout lot, and then long range is a regional visitor center at the intersection. The next strategy is to continue property redevelopment in the corridor. We've identified several properties in the corridor that would be ideal for redevelopment. There are good examples in Virginia, especially in Danville, where public bodies have purchased property and worked in public-private partnerships for redevelopment. That could be one strategy. We do recommend lowering thresholds of incentives, incentive thresholds in the enterprise zone in that corridor to encourage more business development. But there are several things you can do to encourage property redevelopment. And also using public investments to leverage private investments, so continuing investment in the streetscape, and then to work with the county to extend that streetscape look all the way out to the intersection. So when someone pulls off, there's a continuous visual image from the intersection all the way into downtown. Of course, continue your trail and greenway connectivity so that people can ride their bike to the new park and then over to the tunnel, to the visitor center, and all of that is connected. I could see a pedestrian and bike bridge from Sunset Park across the road to the visitor center, then access to the tunnel trailhead, for example. And that pedestrian and bike bridge could look like a Blue Ridge Parkway tunnel, for example. That would be a project that you would work with VDOT to do. And then public art, a good public art program could make that theme consistent throughout the city with those sort of heritage themes, again, arches, large chimneys and rock types of features around the city which could tie it all together. And of course, we want thriving businesses in the corridor, in the redeveloped corridor. And there are several strategies to help infill business, especially in those which you have retail leakage. One is to identify successful entrepreneurs in, let's say, Stanton or Charlottesville to open a second location in Waynesboro. So let's say, for example, there's a successful entrepreneur in Charlottesville that has an Italian restaurant. Maybe they would open a steakhouse or an oyster bar, for example, in Waynesboro. So find those successful entrepreneurs and encourage them to open locations here. We do talk about special marketing events to bring potential entrepreneurs to the corridor, continuing the business plan competition, which you've done really well at. Also, working to help retail start up and incubate and grow in the corridor is really important. And don't overlook pop-up businesses. As you start to generate activity in the corridor, it'll be key to encourage pop-up activities, so like a pop-up art show or a food truck rally, anything that will create foot traffic in the corridor. And giving some first-year service packages and mentoring services so that companies can get off to a good start as they start to do business in the corridor. We do have a few comments about city policies that support redevelopment. So for example, I was interested in your earlier discussion about enforcing the vehicle code ordinance. So things like being very strict on code enforcement can help, especially in corridor redevelopment. The city of Columbia, South Carolina, is taking a real hard look at vacant buildings. They've created a vacant building registry, and the longer your building stays vacant, the price increase for each year that you have to reregister your building. It's an encouragement to make sure that people do rent out their buildings rather than just keep them vacant. Businesses did talk about the future potential of co-locating city services so that it's easier for them to access those services. And then we do make a comment about monitoring VDOT studies for safety and traffic. There's going to be a lot more people turning off the highway. They're going to be unsure where they're going. They're going to slam on their brakes to turn into a store. You're going to have more hikers. You're going to have more cyclists, especially when the trailhead to the tunnel opens. There's going to be a lot more people in that corridor in different modes of transportation. And so making sure that you stay on top of VDOT's plans for safety and enhancement in the corridor will be really important. And then working on branding and marketing the corridor. So in our report, we just labeled it, which we think is a great name, and staff worked on this a lot, is the Gateway Parkway. We have several iterations in the written report playing off of the term Parkway, outside Parkway, adventure Parkway, others that play off Trail from the Appalachia Trail. But really, this is a gateway and can be a significant gateway to the city. So that Gateway Parkway term is one that we have stuck to for our work. But integrating that into the overall city's brand will be really important in marketing it. You can even have a co-op advertising program. So if businesses, or let's say, an outfitter was doing an advertisement in a magazine, if they said proudly located in Waynesboro's Gateway Parkway, you might even have a co-op advertising program with them. But it'd be really important not only to externally market the corridor, but also internally as well. And then finally, marketing the business opportunities. A familiarization tour would be really important, not only for people from the outside that are considering investing in the corridor, it'll be important for people like you that are considering public investments in the corridor. There are some different and unique ways that you can use virtual reality. So for example, it'd be pretty cool if I handed all of you virtual reality goggles and you were standing in this corridor, and you could see potential new businesses developed. You could see the new visitor center. You could see the streetscape improvements, all through virtual reality. That would be an important tool, not only for businesses that are thinking about making investments, but also people like you who are making public investments in the corridor. We do mention several website updates and materials updates that'll help market and promote the Gateway Parkway, both internally and externally. But one of the things you can do is to make sure that those spaces are activated, so holding public meetings there, scheduling all types of outdoor events, for example, both in the park, the tunnel trailhead, and vacant spaces and lots in that area, anything you can do to increase foot traffic and awareness in the corridor. So those are a lot of things on the to-do list for the EDA and their partners. So we segmented the implementation plan into three sections. The first is the getting started stuff. A lot of this is marketing and promotion and really raising awareness of the corridor. The second group is the start planning projects, and this is where the interim visitor center will come into play. And the long range is the regional visitor center. That could take many years to put into place and seeking a lot of funding for that. But the getting started projects are things that we would like to see staff put into their budget planning process to get started with next year's budget. And then the start planning projects are those that'll take some feasibility study, like relocating the visitor center. So what we'd like for you to do is to accept the report at some point and then to share it with your allies so that everyone knows that this corridor is a priority for the city for redevelopment. Staff would integrate it, again, into their program of work and their budget planning, and then to work on launching it in 2020 going forward. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Any questions?
I just had a question. You used the term retail leakage several times, and that's not a term I'm familiar with. So tell me what you mean by retail leakage.
So that's the dollars that are leaked from your community. So if you look at the supply of, let's just say, sporting goods, and then you looked at the demand, the potential demand for sporting goods, if there is more demand than supply, then they're spending their dollars somewhere else. If you looked at a city like Charlottesville, you would see that there's what appears to be a lot of oversupply, and that's because a lot of tourists come into that area to spend money, and of course, the college students have a lot of spending capacity as well. But that gives you just an idea. On smaller communities like Waynesboro, I would say it's a good educated guess, but it gives you an idea of what dollars could be retained if there was more supply or more business opportunity here.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? The South Carolina example of vacancy tax is intriguing. I think that's one of the issues in Virginia, as Dylan Rule says, I don't believe that that's something that's currently available to localities like Waynesboro. But I'm glad you mentioned it because it might be something that, as we consider legislative agenda items or ideas to advocate for, it might be something worthwhile.
It's like if your building is vacant for, I think it's 120 days, you have to register it at no cost. And then a year later, if your building is still vacant, then you have to reregister it, but then there's a cost associated with reregistering it. And then at the next year that's still vacant, you reregister. The cost goes up. There is another city, I think this is also in South Carolina, that's looking at a rent subsidy program that would help business owners hold out for a better tenant. So for example, I own a historic property in my small town in North Carolina. I had a vacancy in my retail space. The first business that came along was one that would not have benefited downtown, and oftentimes, business owners would want to rent to the first company that came along. This program in this South Carolina town would provide you a rent subsidy to hold out for a company that would lift up the downtown area and benefit the tourism aspect of downtown. So it helps, I guess spiral up is one way to look at it, the level of retailer in the downtown area.
Thank you. Any else? Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, compliments to your staff on their hard work on the application and the work that went into it.
Great. And our EDA, thanks for all you all do and for being here tonight. Thank you. All right. So go to number... Eight is to appoint three viewers and an alternate to consider the impact of a request by Waynesboro Hotel LLC to dissolve lot lines and vacated portion of the undeveloped Chickorrel Lane right-of-way. Tax map numbers 51-18-3 and 51-18-4 to allow for the construction of Chickorrel Lane and a hotel. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you may recall that in recent years, you entertained and then in fact provided an incentive to this hotelier to construct a hotel on Chickorrel Lane through essentially a TIF agreement. The road will be constructed. We're at the point now where we're reviewing road construction plans, and the plans would require some adjustments to the right-of-way. So it would be really amending the right-of-way. There will still be a right-of-way for the construction of Chickorrel Lane, a currently platted but not constructed street. So the way the process works, according to the city's charter, is that the first step in vacating public right-of-way is to appoint three viewers. Subsequently, you'll have a public hearing, receive the viewer's report, and a staff review and recommendation of the specifics of the plan, and then ultimately you can decide the matter. So tonight, the task is simply to appoint viewers.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to appoint viewers? We have some names.
I can give three names if you like. Ellen Winter, Jeff Mallett, Mark Stevens, and an alternate of Garnett Weatherholtz.
Okay. So we've got a selection of viewers and an alternate as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Number nine is to consider introducing ordinance appropriating $21,500, $21,500 to the general fund for temporary staffing at the circuit court. Mr. Ham.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as the ordinance indicates, the staff in the court will be, is planning for a retirement of a long-tenured employee. The clerk has requested and recommends that she be authorized to hire an additional staff person for the second half of the fiscal year in order to have some overlap for training. I would note also that the clerk has talked about with the increased business in the office in the court, the need to sort of reorganize and reassign responsibility, which will require some special training, build some additional capacity. The funds for this are not local funds. They come from state funds. Fees recovered, and so it's simply a matter of appropriating the state revenue to support the request, which I would recommend to you.
All right. Anything, is there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'd make that motion.
Thank you. And this at our December 9 meeting. Number 10 is to consider introducing ordinance appropriating $600 from the circuit court document copy restricted reserve to the general fund to purchase a document scanner. Mr. Ham.
Yes, sir. This is a purchase, this will be an additional scanner station to allow for document conversion from old form paper hard copy documents to electronic documents. The hardware is provided by the Department of Judicial Services and is a shared cost endeavor with the city. These funds also are coming from a restricted court reserve, so these are not local funds. And I would also note and extend appreciation for our clerk, Ms. Briggs, attendance this evening.
Very good. Thank you. So is there a, is there a motion to introduce this ordinance?
I'd make that motion.
Great. Thank you. Number 11 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating grant funds in the amount of $196,000 from the Virginia Information Technology Agency to upgrade the 911 call-taking equipment and deployment of text to 911 equipment. Mr. Ham.
Again, the title, I think, explains this sufficiently, but just to be clear, this is a significant upgrade of our call-taking equipment in the 911 center. It will be the next generation of technology which will allow citizens requiring assistance to communicate with the call center through text. Mr. Kreiser is here to answer any questions you might have. It is a mandated deployment of this next generation of technology. The state will reimburse the city for the expenses, and we anticipate the project will cost $196,000.
Okay. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Great. Thank you. Number 12 is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating gift funds from the Shenandoah Valley Regional Program in the amount of $3,000 to the school funds to be used for the Waynesboro Post-High House. Mr. Ham.
Again, these are gift funds, and so unless there are questions, I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you. Number 13 is to consider introducing an ordinance amending Section 78-63 of the City Code amount of exemption to expand eligibility for tax relief for qualifying elderly or disabled.
Yes, sir. As you're aware, the city of Waynesboro has a codified program of providing tax relief for the elderly and disabled. To qualify as elderly, the individual must be at least 65 years of age on January 1st of the tax year. Citizens certified as permanently and totally disabled on January 1st of the tax year are eligible to apply regardless of age. The tax relief, which is a partial exemption, is provided according to qualifying criteria of annual income, gross annual income, and net financial worth. The amount of relief is prorated according to a combined metric of annual income and the net worth previously mentioned. The Commissioner of Revenue administers the program. Periodically, localities which provide tax relief programs review and adjust qualifying criteria. City Council's most recent revisions to Waynesboro's program parameters are as follows. In 2007, the net worth limit was increased from $25,000 to $60,000. In 2011, the income limit was increased from $25,000 to $27,500. And in 2017, the city council increased net combined financial worth and gross combined income limits to match those in Stanton, and that metric is attached to the staff report here. Following the 2007 revisions, qualifying applicants increased from 122 individuals to 169 individuals. The number of qualifying individuals peaked in 2011 at 185 and declined to 155 in 2016. In 2007... In 2017, 175 applicants qualified for relief totaling $108,000. And in 2018, the most recent tax year, the most recent completed tax year, the numbers were 160 qualifying applicants and who received $104,000 in relief. In response to requests by the mayor on behalf of the council, I was asked to provide some recommended possible revisions to the program that would increase participation. It's not possible to forecast with much confidence and certainly even less certainty what financial impact the changes might have, but certainly, we could anticipate that by adjusting both the gross combined income and the net financial worth, we would anticipate at least additional eligible individuals and then would hope that through public education, recruitment, et cetera, that they would apply and enjoy benefit from the program. The recommended changes are to increase the net combined financial worth by, excuse me, let me go back to my notes. The net financial worth criteria be increased by an increment of $5,000 and the combined gross income criteria be increased by an increment of $2,000. And again, the objective would be simply to capture additional eligible people who were determined to be marginally ineligible by virtue of either of those criteria. But I would note also that we are not altering the metric that defines the relief extended. Reviewing the notes in the presentation, I think I made a statement that the relief is partial. There is one cell in the metric that those identified as the most needy by virtue of our criteria do receive 100% relief, but that's only, that's a very limited number and one set of criteria. All other applicants or qualifying applicants receive partial relief. And this applies to the real estate tax only. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
How do people access this information?
They apply through the Commissioner of Revenue's office.
And how would I, like, how would they find out about it? Like, is it just through someone telling them, hey, by the way, you know, if you're struggling, then?
I think that there is reference to the program on the tax bill, and then whatever, I think we try to put some information on the website, but really, it's the responsibility of the Commissioner to forward information about that program.
Virginia code requires it to be a notice in their tax bill.
Okay.
As well as the Commissioner of Revenue to post in reasonable locations, either on the website or on a posting board, that the program is availability.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamp, on the material that's included here, these are the new numbers. You've got your...
So, yes, sir, I think I included, if you're referring to the two matrix, or... So the second sheet has the current program, where you have the metrics of the gross combined income, sort of on the Y-axis, and then the net combined financial worth is represented on the X-axis. And so the top set of cells is the current program, and the set of cells beneath it, which I hope is labeled Waynesboro Proposed, is what we would, the proposed changes to the...
Okay, and so I was looking at the ordinance, and that looks like that is the proposed schedule on the next...
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. The ordinance would contain only the proposed.
Gotcha.
Language.
Any other questions?
I would note that these changes should be adopted before the ensuing tax year in which they would take place. So these will be in effect for 2020, and they're presented with the hope that we will adopt them if council is so inclined by the end of the calendar year.
Great, thank you. Well, I appreciate you, and personally, I appreciate you putting it forward. I've talked to, you know, a few taxpayers that literally were just either hundreds of dollars over the gross bounds or less than $1,000 above the gross bounds, and so as a result, received no reprieve, no assistance. And so, and these were, you know, taxpayers and citizens that are 90 years old, taking care of family members that are, they've been married for 70 years. So this provides, I think, I think some measure of additional support and resources for our most vulnerable residents. So I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So with that, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I will make that motion.
Great, thank you. I'll just bring this up at our December 9 meeting as well. Thank you. Number 14 is to authorize the city manager to establish a lease agreement with the Waynesboro Public Schools for a portion of 937 First Street.
Yes, sir. 937 First Street is a 9.7 acre lot owned by the city of Waynesboro. The administrative and engineering functions of the city are located at that address, as are our Little League ball field maintained by Parks and Recreation, a stormwater detention facility, a water tower, pardon me, the former Wayne Hills Elementary School, from which Waynesboro Public Schools and the Shenandoah Valley Regional Head Start operate pre-K programs. The Head Start program has received a grant to replace the two modular units that face on First Street presently. As a condition of the grant, a formal lease is required to secure the property for educational purposes. At present, the city and schools do not have a formal lease agreement, and so we sort of cooperate on this property that the city owns. We've had the educational functions for some time. This, this, the grant simply contemplates replacing the facility of those two modular units, so I don't see it changing the dynamic of either the educational functions or our municipal functions. And really, I bring this to you to simply satisfy the conditions of the grant so that they can move forward in that regard. We would enter into a lease with Waynesboro Public Schools of a very generous and favorable nature, limited consideration, and a 15-year term, at which time, the schools would sublet a portion of the property to the Head Start program for the purposes of the grant. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any questions, Mr. Hamp? I think you, is there a motion to authorize the city manager to establish a lease agreement with the schools?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right. Brings us to communication correspondence and calendar.
Yes, sir. I do have an item. I noticed we have a number of staff here this evening, and I appreciate their attendance and support for your work tonight. Been trying to organize an opportunity to get both Mr. Jones and the award in the same room for a council meeting, but that seems an elusive, a simple but elusive task. So this evening, I'd like to acknowledge an award that our Parks and Recreation Department was presented in October of this year, earlier, at the VRPS State Conference. Over 500 delegates from around the state gathered at the 64th Annual Conference of the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society that was held in Tyson's Corner, Virginia. The conference is a learning exchange and provides an opportunity for recreation and park professionals to discuss areas of common interest. Highlighting each year's conference, a formal presentation of awards is part of the program. The statewide program honors individuals, departments, and organizations throughout the Commonwealth who have demonstrated excellence in any of several areas of judging during the previous year. 115 applications were received vying for awards in 14 different categories. Judged by a jury of peers, Waynesboro Parks and Recreation received an award for the best new renovation slash addition bricks and mortar population for communities with 25,000 and under category for the Rosenwall Community Teen Center Room. That's a terrific facility. I think each of you have had an opportunity to see what has been accomplished there and the programming that occurs there. But I think it's also reflects sort of Dwayne and the department's vision to, to the greatest extent possible, integrate that facility or continue to integrate the facility into the neighborhood, provide programming for residents and neighbors of all ages. But also, an exceptional feature of this program was the partnership and collaboration that occurred, that the project was supported by a grant from the community foundation. And with coordination and program support with our central Shenandoah Health District, Comcast, the Office on Youth, all contribute a part to make that project a success. But that's a statewide award, and I think a testament to Dwayne and the work of his staff and the facility. So I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, that's awesome. I'd say we give him a round of applause. For Dwayne and your staff and, again, all of our community partners that made that just a tremendous asset for our community. So much appreciated, thank you.
That's all I have this evening, sir.
Great, thank you. Brings us to number 16, which is citizen comment period.
Mr. Herman Wells.
Mr. Wells, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, and then how this will work is the green light will come on, just like a stoplight, yellow slowdown, and red is if you could wrap up the comments.
Great, thank you. My name is Herman Wells. I live on Magnolia Avenue. Before I begin, I just want to say I recognize that the leadership of this community has a great deal of priorities, and what I'm about to say may or may not even fit in that, in any priority. But I moved here in March, I'm a relatively new member of the community, and I'm proud to be here. I've kind of struggled a little bit with the water bill. Nothing weird about the water bill. I'm sure I'm consuming the amount of water that I'm, that I'm, that I'm using, but it's the payment method. So what's happening, as most of you know, is, is every few months, you receive a water bill in the mail. I've now discovered that you receive two stormwater bills during the year also. I didn't know that. I'd know that now, I just received one. So what happens is, is you receive your bill, you can pay it online for a fee, or you can send it in, which is pretty easy with a stamp. My challenge, and I actually found another person that has the same challenge, so that's why I'm here, because there was more than one person. I thought maybe I was alone, but my wife and I hike the Appalachian Trail and other trails. We do long trails, so sometimes we're gone for several months at a time. So what I do is, is I try to see how much money I pay on my bill, and I kind of double it up and send it in so that I have an overage. Sometimes I go and visit my family in Texas, I'm gone for a month. Bottom line is, is the, these bills are kind of worrying me a little bit. I'm worried I'm going to miss one because they come in the mail. And so I'm just coming to the board to ask if maybe at some point, someone thought about automation. Every bill that I receive, other than the water bill, is automated. It's withdrawn from my bank account automatically. In my former life, I worked in the government, and I did a lot of information technology products, projects, very large ones. If it was something that you wanted to do, I assure you that at some point, you would, you know, reap the benefits of it, return on investment, they call it, right? It would be much easier for you guys, it'd probably benefit a lot of people. So if there are others like that, I thought I'd plant the seed, if maybe you hear from your constituents. If not, I'll deal with it. But if you don't have any questions, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwight Williams.
Mr. Williams, you mind stating your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Dwight Williams, 2018 Jefferson Lane here in Waynesboro. And I want to thank you all again for allowing me the opportunity to address you. Reason I'm coming to you today this evening is I've been here in Waynesboro for about five years now. I came from Charlottesville, Harrisburg before that, and then Chicago. And I've noticed something going on here within the Commonwealth that kind of concerns me. And I know that within the Commonwealth, obviously, that includes Waynesboro. What I'm bringing to your attention tonight is the subject of the Second Amendment Sanctuary City Status. I'm sure if you've read any of the articles coming out of DC lately, Roanoke Times, a Senate Bill Number 16 was introduced by a senator out of Fairfax, which would essentially restrict Second Amendment rights to all Commonwealth firearm owners. And of course, that will affect all of us in Waynesboro who do own firearms. While this bill is still just in proposal status, it is a bit concerning, mostly because of the fact that it is going to violate the Second Amendment, which, as I quote, "The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." And that's what it's going to do. Literally, if you read the bill overnight, the majority of firearm owners will become felons based on type of firearms they have. And just to give you a quick example, the popular semi-automatic AR-15 rifle is one that is on the banned list in that bill, along with semi-automatic pistols that happen to have double-stack magazines, or if you have magazines that have more than, hold more than 10 rounds. If anyone has any of this kind of stuff in their, in their safe or in their, in their house, literally overnight, they become a felon. And as a citizen of this state, and as a resident of Waynesboro, I find that to be appalling. I'm a registered gun, I'm a gun owner, I'm a concealed carry permit holder, I'm responsible with my, with all my weapons. Why are we firearm owners being punished for something that other people are doing for all the mass shootings that are going on? This is just more of a knee-jerk reaction, is not an actual solution. So while this, after this bill was filed, numerous counties and municipalities across the Commonwealth have either adopted or are adopting resolutions. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know how the resolutions would actually work, but a number of them in the rural areas down in the southern part of the state have adopted resolutions that basically have said that they will not enforce whatever rule comes from Richmond in guarding, regarding the firearms confiscation and restriction. The provisions of the bill have absolutely no root in making this Commonwealth a safer place at all. It won't at all. It, because it has quite the opposite effect, and it's really just a political stunt. It's not a real solution. So I don't want to take any more time, I know my time is limited, but I want to conclude by submitting to the council, if you're interested in reading it tonight, I do have a copy of Senate Bill Number 16, along with a copy of the resolutions that has made its way throughout multiple counties here in the Commonwealth for your perusal. I know that Augusta County, Rocky Hand County, Rockbridge County are currently looking at these proposals themselves. But as a resident of Waynesboro, I do ask, I do urge the council to at least consider the resolution, consider what is being written in Richmond regarding firearm status, and at least consider putting on the docket for discussion for the next meeting, making Waynesboro a sanctuary city for Second Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
That's it, sir.
Okay. All right. So with that, that brings us to adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some...
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.